All right, so we got six thirty to call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. All right, so now turn things over to the superintendent for the celebration of excellence.
Good evening, everybody. I am very excited tonight to introduce to you this year's recipient of the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award, Abigail Gallagher. Abby is here with us tonight. Abby, give everybody a wave so they can see you for a sec. I think she's frozen. Okay. The Daughters of the American Revolution was established in eighteen ninety by a group of pioneering women in our nation's capital who wanted to perpetuate the memory of the men and women who fought to make our country free and independent. DAR members are passionate about educating the youth of America and contributing to schools and student programs in a variety of ways. And in support of all of that, the DAR Good Citizenship Award and Scholarship Contest was created in nineteen thirty-four to provide scholarships and awards to outstanding students throughout the country. Each year, teachers from high schools across the country select students from the senior class who demonstrate dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism in their homes, schools, and communities. Abby is a role model in all that she does. She displays a quiet confidence and a sense of leadership both in the classroom and the surrounding Bolton community. Abby is a longstanding member of the National Honor Society, drama club participant since grade nine, and an accomplished athlete. She is constantly looking for ways to help others. On the track team, she chose the most difficult event, the three hundred meter hurdles. Her coach shared that she most likely chose this event not because she was the tallest, but it's what the team needed. It's not a surprise that she was chosen as team captain. It is also no surprise, being the selfless person that Abby is, that she is an accomplished cadet and EMT for the Bolton Volunteer Fire Department. Though her intelligence and ability distinguish her in the classroom, it is Abby's selflessness that makes her truly special. Abby exhibits positive energy in everything she does. Abby, congratulations to you and your family, a very well-deserved honor. Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you. It's an honor to be awarded this, and thank you for all the teachers who nominated me.
That's great. Thank you very much. Well-deserved. Congratulations. And that concludes our celebration of excellence for this evening.
All right, very good. Now we'll turn things over to comments from the audiences. Any audience members who'd like to make a comment out there this evening? Hearing nothing. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay, on the routine business and the approval of minutes, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the November ninth, twenty twenty-two business meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott.
I can second that, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments or edits on those minutes? All those favor the motion, please say aye.
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 For anyone who is opposed or abstaining. Okay, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two special meeting.
So moved. This is Chris.
Second, Sue.
Good, Kristen Sue. Any comments or edits on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Could I raise a point of order?
Sure.
The agenda, the celebration of excellence, we just had, did not reflect the last agenda I was sent. When was this agenda posted? The agenda I received from Kristen on twelve-five had celebration of excellence music celebration. So I just want to make sure I'm working off the right agenda here.
It should have said DAR, so I apologize for that error.
Okay, so that's the only change then?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, correct. I'm hoping that's correct right now, so.
Yeah, I know so as well.
I'm operating without an admin assistant gang. I'm doing the best I can. That's what I got for you right now.
Okay. We said all those in favor of the motion, please say aye, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Anyone opposed? I will abstain. I had a work emergency that prevented me at that very moment from logging on, so. Okay, on to BOE committee reports and CAPA.
So on November fifteenth, the full CAPA committee met, began discussing the combined items between both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, the items that have, are on each, each board's list, kind of, kind of went through, and there were some, some moving around. There was the Board of Selectmen's list was still in progress, so there were some late-break news that was added, so there were no conclusions that came out of that meeting. It was just kind of get a sense of where we were and where, where I, what items were going to be, you need to be looked at in more detail. My understanding is that we do have another meeting scheduled. I believe it's for next week on the thirteenth. And I think that at that meeting, the list will be talked about in, in more detail, as we try to whittle it down to what is, down to the one or plus one or mill or so total that it's required to be by charter. Once again, obviously, the list, the cost, the list is much bigger than the budget we'll be able to support.
Thank you very much. On to curriculum.
Hi, we met on Monday, the fifth. Greg Gallo, the art teacher at Bolton High School, presented a proposal for new animation and design course. This will introduce students to the elements of graphic design. We already own all the necessary software, so the cost, additional costs would be minimal. The subcommittee agreed to move it forward for approval by the Board of Ed. We also reviewed the status of the new Sunday program for wordwork in grades three through five. Teachers received updated training and in-class modeling during the December second early release day. Parent Square, a new parent and student communication tool, is being used by VHS and BCS will follow in the second half of the school year. Subcommittee also discussed at length Bolton's intent to complete a waiver for our K-5 reading and phonics programs once the CSDE waiver documents are released. In case that happens and it is not accepted, we have chosen two of the state-approved programs to pilot. Should we be required to choose one, we'll be, we'll need in-depth experience with them to make an informed decision. The short six-to-eight-week pilot is set to begin on January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, with one teacher at each grade level teaching a unit from the following programs: EL, Imagine Learning, and Amplify CKLA. One teacher will continue with our current programming. We will use our current assessments to measure student progresses. They are independent of any program.
I think we're on to finance, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't click on mute, I think.
Okay. Hello, we've spent twenty-nine percent of the budget so far, and last year, twenty-eight percent had been expended. And special education, as we always say, is a never-ending landscape. And I'm going to hand it over to Kristen, Superintendent Hekt.
Thank you very much, Bia. So we have just a few transfers to just go over for November. We had happily purchased Connecticut Association for Health, PE, Recreation, and Dance Membership and Conference. That conference hasn't happened in a while, so we're excited to be able to send our staff to that conference. We had a reclassification to be able to purchase signup Genius Pro for the high school and a reclass to cover a portion of the Music Theater, Mama Mia production fees, because production fees have gone way up, like everything else, and a reclass to cover the sixty-six cent shortfall for the Library Media Center dues for CLC. Any questions about those? Okay, so before I move on, we'll need a motion for those November transfers, please.
I'll make a motion for the transfers.
Thank you, Ria.
Again, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Any questions or comments about these transfers and reclasses? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? I think that was everybody. Okay, continue.
Thank you. So I just, Joe, if we could please go to the second page. You know, I just want to call to the board's attention that Beth Casal and I have been working really hard to try to get our arms around exactly where we stand with Student Support Services and Special Ed. I do anticipate next month being able to report out. We are in a deficit. We're going to be. We have a couple of more things that are a little uncertain right now, and I am hopeful that we have better certainty in terms of what we are able to share and report out come January. So I just wanted to kind of give that precursor for next month. Thank you.
All right. On to the student representative reports.
Michael, you're on, sir.
Oh, yeah. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Aaron was not able to make it due to previous arrangements, so he will just be mute tonight. But earlier this month, NHS held a blood drive with the Red Cross, and the art and tech departments both had field trips of them very well. Next week, Bolton Music Works is holding a concert where the band, chorus, percussion, and jazz band will all be performing. Winter sports have also started, and as the holiday season has rolled around, NHS also held a toy drive and hot chocolate was given out during one of last week's lunch waves. And we are all looking forward to winter break, and I hope that you all have a great holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. You too. Feel free to stay, Michael, but you don't have to. You've got other things you need to do.
Okay, on to community meeting reports. Do we have any of those?
I attended the last Bolton Scholarship Fund meeting, but wasn't really anything to report out.
I guess I could speak to the PTA. I did not attend the meetings, but I know people did, and they, PTA has been very active lately. They just had a pretty successful holiday store in the BCS that was rather chaotic, but I think went well. They have the Snowman Festival, second annual coming up, where children purchase blank white snowmen's with like little yard sign things that go to the bottom, and they decorate them in their vision. And then people come, I believe, two Saturdays from now and vote on them, and they have a little hot chocolate and stuff. And also there and planning for a gala, the return of the famous PTA Gala will be this, I think, March. And I'm not sure if they've decided on a theme or not yet, but I think that it might be themes for what the one that was going to be canceled was. But I don't want to say that in case they're thinking otherwise, but they've been pretty active lately, and things are going well on that front. Okay, now I'll turn things over to Kristen for the superintendent of schools reports.
Great, thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our director of teaching and learning, Monica, all you, please.
Thank you. All right, so we have been working on the waiver for Bolton Public Schools to present our current curriculum and current program to the Connecticut State, typo, I'm sorry, CSD, State Department of Education. Given the parameters that they provided to us in late October, they have informed us that final waiver documents are forthcoming, but they don't have a target date. So we are waiting for that. We're prepared and collecting the necessary, necessary data. If, for whatever reason, that waiver is not accepted, we certainly want to be prepared. We have been speaking with all of the representatives from all of the approved programs. We narrowed it down to two that we think could possibly be the best fit for Bolton, and we do have teachers piloting those currently, well, but planning to pilot them beginning in January, as you heard Sue mention in the subcommittee report. Teachers have been, you know, taking time going through the materials, aligning the units that are in these programs with units that we have, with the understanding that nothing will happen at the expense of our students. We want to make sure that they don't miss anything that we currently have in our, in our current curriculum, and that they are prepared and that any work that they do is aligned with current standards. They are using a rubric. They are working very closely with our instructional coach, Kelly Bear, and the administration at the building level to, to kind of put these programs up against what we're currently using, which is a combination of some units of study. We use a separate explicit phonics program, and we are, the state is saying that these other programs are more comprehensive, so we would like to see if that is true, and that is the direction we're headed in.
Thank you, Monica. I would also like to thank Monica and Daryl and Amela and our coach, Kelly Bear, and all of our teachers and our reading specialists. This is a heavy lift, and it's a tremendous amount of work, and they're all digging in as they always do, and they're doing a great job. And I just want to commend everybody for their
Just amazing. They're really, really wonderful. They are, they're being incredible through the whole process.
Absolutely. Any questions for Monica or for me about this, or Daryl or Amela? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Giar for a BCS update.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So since last month's BOE meeting on November ninth, BCS has continued to be very busy. We had our Veterans Day event, which I alluded to and talked about a little bit at the meeting. That was on November eleventh. It was very well-attended, and we received great feedback from our veterans who took, who look forward to this event each year. The student speakers and the classroom performances were amazing. Our eighth-grade students were busy right from the very beginning of November, all the way up to Thanksgiving, and a couple of highlights for the eighth graders in November, where they visited Bolton High School on November fourteenth, and then they took their PSATs the very next day on November fifteenth. We had parent-teacher conferences, which were on November twenty-first and twenty-second. Those are also very well-attended. And as a school, we offered families both an in-person option and a virtual option, which made it easier for parents to attend. As Chair Bernill alluded to, the PTA continues to do an outstanding job of supporting BCS. This past month has included the PTA Book Fair, Penguin Patch Holiday Shop, and as he mentioned, the activity of the, of the holiday shop, the students enjoy buying their family and friends little gifts from the shop. They walk out with their arms full, and it's just, it's awesome. It's one of my favorite events. The PTA had their bi-monthly meeting this past Monday, where Ms. Fezic and myself presented a teaching and learning update to the parents about BCS, which was very well-received. There's a little Q and A at the end, and they were probably about fifteen to twenty people in person and another twenty to thirty on Zoom. So it was a well-attended meeting with some great questions. We are very excited for this Friday, when our staff and students will donate one dollar to wear pajamas. All the money raised will be donated to CCM Save. This is our yearly event. I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Fezic for a walkathon update.
Good evening, everyone. So for the walkathon this year, our PTA partnered with Booster Thon, which is a school fundraising company to raise money for curriculum enrichment materials. The program included seven days of the Booster Thon staff being at BCS with our students and taking them through a character development unit at their lunch wave. And then each night, students and classrooms could win fun prizes for getting the most donations from family members and friends. So some of those prizes that classes won included a secret mission around the school or a classroom glow party with the Booster Thon staff. So our students were so excited. The Booster Thon staff had a lot of high energy, and so it was really great to have them in the building with us. And then this all culminated into our big walkathon event on October twenty-fifth, where grade levels went out in shifts and walked laps around the BCS lots. At the end of each shift, Mr. Giar and I got pied in the face to support our students, staff, Booster Thon, and our PTA. Altogether, our donation profit was twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars with donations from people in thirty-one different states around the country, which was really cool. And this could not have been achieved without our amazing PTA. So here is a video from our walkathon event.
Those responsible for bringing the walkathon to your school today, the Bolton Center School, PTS!
This is, I want to say year four or five of the walkathon that the PTA organizes, and it really is a great event that's just about to walk today. There's a series of events over the past few weeks where the students took part in little lessons.
Learning about different character traits that you can do and to make yourself a better person.
Leadership is standing up for others and also being a better person for you.
It was great working with PTA. They are so supportive. It was a lot of communication with families, communicating with teachers, and Booster Thon, of course, just making sure that everything was smooth and organized. And so it ended up being a really great program and a great event.
We got slime two years ago. We got pied in the face last year, and it's been overwhelmingly the favorite of the kids is the pie in the face.
Um, and I feel like for the kids, that's, that's one of the biggest incentives. I mean, my son, he kept talking about it. He's really excited to pie Mr. Giar in the face, and he's
And I think it did help to raise some money, so we're ready to get pied in the face three times today.
Thank you both very much, and I just want to give kudos to both Daryl and Amela for getting pied in the face. Not once, not twice, not three times. So it was great. It was awesome. And, and PTA, they're just amazing. They are, they are, they're dialed in, and they're doing great work, and we greatly appreciate it because it really does go to support our school. So it's great. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Masali, Joe, for high school update, please.
Thank you very much. So as you know, we really do take safety here as a, as a big priority in Bolton. And in the wake of several swatting incidences in Connecticut, we've made some small updates to procedures and conducted additional training for staff and students. I'd like to also thank our newly-appointed resident trooper, Brian Contenta, who took some time to chat with staff at both schools. The administrative team here in Bolton is proud of our safety plans and recently received very positive unsolicited compliments from new troopers and members of the Bolton Senior Center on building procedures, and also from a paramedic from a totally different community who happened to stop at the recent bus accident. He reported afterwards to Fire Chief Dixon that he'd never seen a school bus incident handled so smoothly. So thanks to all of us who take safety as such a priority. Last month, I shared with you an update on the college application acceptance status of students. Tonight, I wanted to share some ways we continue to provide our students with a variety of college and career pathways in collaboration with teachers, colleges, and other institutions. We had students participate in a bunch of things, including art students had a visit from the Hartford Art School at the University of Hartford, and they shared information on post-secondary programs. Mr. Gallo also organized a trip to the Hillstead Museum to study the work of impressionist painters. In tech ed, fifteen of our BHS students joined a group of BCS students to attend the Aerospace Manufacturing Expo at the Connecticut Convention Center. Students able to meet with a variety of businesses and schools to learn about training requirements and job opportunities. Lincoln Tech came and presented to our students in a variety of trades, medical assisting, electrical, HVAC, manufacturing, diesel, et cetera. And that speaker discussed job opportunities and how to become a competitive applicant in those fields. And we have also scheduled the Goodwin University to bring their manufacturing demonstration trailer to us in the spring for Bolton High School students to go out and visit during the day and learn about that. Our culinary students were pleased to welcome members of the Bolton Senior Center, who joined us last week for a bread baking competition, and will be returning, the seniors will, that is, for cookie tasting later this month. And additionally, a representative from Johnson and Wales presented to our students on hospitality fields and the culinary arts in some of Mr. Jones' classes. So lots of things going on in the post-secondary information world. And recently, the faculty here at the high school engaged in some ongoing professional collaboration and discussion. A few weeks ago, a topic of interest to all teachers arose, and our librarian, McGee Klepper, prepared information for staff and presented it to all of us. She shared details of several resources we could all use, explained when and how research information is included in classroom instruction, and offered ways that she can support teachers. And Mrs. Klepper is here tonight to share some of this information with you.
All right. Hi, everyone. I, for those of you who don't know me, I am McGee Klepper, and I am the librarian at the high school. I'm just going to give you
Sorry, and a Bolton High School alum, just putting that out.
Oh, yeah, and Bolton High School, and Daughters of the American Revolution award winner way back, long, long, long time ago. Okay. All right, so school librarians, we're, position is unique because we're not, and at the high school, we're not in classroom. So I don't really have curriculum that I follow. I have these key commitments that guide me in what I do with the students and ways I can help the staff. Their inquire, engage, explore, curate, collaborate, and then include. And then within that, I have my domains, think, grow, create, and share. And that, like I said, guides what I do. All right, so librarians have five common beliefs that we all share. The first is that information technologies must be appropriately integrated and equitably available to all students. And at the high school, we're very lucky that we have a variety of resources that all of our students have access to. We have multiple online databases. We have personal computers they can use in addition to their Chromebooks that they're given. We have a variety of printers. We have a poster printer, black and white printer, a color printer. We have a silhouette cameo. Of course, we have our maker space that has all sorts of STEM activities, and then we have our books. Currently, we have over six thousand books, and we are constantly updating our collection to meet the needs of our students and what they like and what's trending on TikTok. So the second common belief is that the library is a unique and essential part of the learning community. At the high school, students have access to the library every day, including after school for homework club. Students are welcome to come during their study hall, and these pictures I took Students are welcome to come during their study hall and these pictures I took during the same period, um, a few weeks ago. So you can see there, they come for a variety of different reasons. They come to work together, to read, to, um, work by themselves. And then we have a few students working on, um, stress relieving activities. We have puzzles that we put out and then those girls are playing Uno. On average, we have sixty to eighty students per day come to the library. Right. Thank you. Um, every year, we put out a survey to the students asking, um, all sorts of questions about the services we provide. One of the questions we ask is why they come to the library and what they like about the library. Um, these are some of the responses we received last year. It's very, very important to, um, my assistant and I, that we're not only meeting the students' needs academically, but also socially and emotionally. And we're extremely proud of the safe space and environment that we have created over the years for the students. The third belief is that learners should be prepared for college, career, and life. Um, so throughout the school year, I work with different teachers and students, um, on various lessons and projects. This is the, um, list of the major lessons that I teach throughout the year and it, um, has a brief explanation and the grade that I work with. The teacher's favorite lesson is the email etiquette lesson because, um, that's the very first lesson our ninth graders get. Um, and that's the one, you know, they use the most. Um, I teach them how to protect their online reputation with social media, how to use our online databases to conduct their research, um, MLA citations, and, um, how to give presentations come senior year to prepare them for their senior capstone night. Uh, the fourth common belief is that reading, of course, is the core of personal and academic competency. At the high school, we support reading multiple ways. Our students are huge readers. Um, they love to read. Um, a few years ago, we decided to do a soft genrefication of our fiction section. We put stickers on the spine label, um, to correspond with the book's genres. And this was because students were kind of shy asking us, um, for books to read. So now they can just go up to the bookshelves and see that if they're looking for a mystery or horror, that's our, we can't keep those on the shelves. They love them. Bakes and spot red and they can find, um, those. They also told us they like it because they can try new things that they've never tried, um, and find those easily. So, uh, we've Skyped with authors. We, a few years ago, we Skyped with the author of The Hate U Give, um, Angie Thomas. This is Jaclyn Woodson, which we Skyped with last year. We're looking into Skyping with someone this year. Um, we have a book club that students, um, belong to. We have various contests. We have, um, like a bookmark decorating contest. The student's favorite is a book in a jar. I photocopy a book and kind of shred it and they have to try to guess the author and the title of the book without opening the jar. They can shake it, but that's all they can do. Um, and then they win a little prize. Um, last year, I made these signs, um, are currently reading signs for every staff member and they can write with an X and marker what they're reading. And so students, um, just can see that, you know, we just, we're not just teachers. We, we read for, uh, fun. Um, and then finally, we do monthly book displays and this one was our October and it was actually just featured in the crack newsletter, which is pretty cool. Great. Okay, our fifth and final belief is that qualified librarians lead effective school libraries. Um, the students are very, um, comfortable with me and they know that they can come and, um, ask for help or whatever. Um, but behind the scenes, I'm also helping teachers on a daily basis and not necessarily in a lesson. So, um, teachers email me requesting book lists to fit their curriculum. I just, um, created a list of a hundred books organized by theme for our contemporary fiction classes. Um, they asked me to find and research different technology that's approved by the state that they can use. Um, and then, of course, to help create research guides or pathways for different projects. And then this is just the list of all the things that I do throughout the year. And that's it. That's the library of high school. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Great job, McGee, as always. Are there any questions for McGee? All right. Hearing none. Thank you, McGee. Very much. Great job. Turn it back over to you. That concludes my report this evening. Chair Rodeo.
Thank you, everyone. Um, unfinished business, we don't have any. So.
I have some unfinished business, actually, if I might. Um, it, it appears from the emails I get to my, uh, district email that crack seems to be under the impression that I am still Bolton's representative to crack, but I haven't been that for over a year. So, uh, I don't know if we had, I thought we had actually appointed somebody, but I, maybe I was wrong about that. So, uh, if, if we, so I guess the unfinished business is that we probably need to find a crack, a new crack representative.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I don't think anyone responded when we were.
Maybe that may have been what happened. No one volunteered.
Okay, I'll talk to Kristen about it and see if we can get anyone to commit to doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, under new business resignations.
We do not have any tonight. Very excited to say that.
Oh, wow. Look at us, ours. Look at how stable this world is we live in. That's wonderful here. Um, on to policies, we have a large quantity of first read policies this evening.
So Sue, would you just, would you like me, would you and Chris like me, or do you want to kind of give a brief overview of each one? What is your preference?
Uh, I'm happy to give a brief overview.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah, so we, we do have a lot and I'll try to get through them as quickly as possible. Most of the, most of them are updated to reflect new state or federal, uh, laws or regulations or in some cases, new guidance from the State Department of Education. So the first one we have is, uh, policy two, four, one, zero, retention of electronic records and information. Uh, it's been revised to reflect updates to a state required form for authorizing the disposal of records. Um, it also clarifies that the district retains all messages sent through its computer systems, including its Wi-Fi network and regardless of whether the message originated on a district-owned computer or a personal device such as a cell phone or laptop. Um, and even if the, uh, messaging question has been deleted from the personal device. Um, basically the rule, you know, that if, if you're using a personal device and you're an employee and you're on school grounds and hop on the email, you have no expectation of privacy for any messages you send. Policy four, one, one, eight dot one, prohibition regarding sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. Uh, this is just a really minor copy editing type edit, um, moving a subsection number. Policy four, one, one, eight dot four, employee use of the district's computer systems. Uh, it mimics the changes made, uh, to the retention policy, um, but adds a more explicit warning that employees should have no expectation of privacy uh, when using the district's computer systems. Policy four, one, one, eight dot six, this is a new policy, uh, emergency action plan for inter-scholastic and intramural athletic events. Uh, it's a new policy required by a new state law and it directs the administration to develop and have in place a plan to handle emergencies that might arise at athletic events. Policy four, one, one, eight dot seven, exertional heat illness awareness for intramural and inter-scholastic athletics. Also a new policy, um, required by a new state law. This one requires all coaches to complete an exertional heat illness awareness program and to review the program annually. My understanding is it's basically to increase awareness on the part of coaches, um, but also athletes and their parents, uh, of the problems that can, you know, come about from training in too hot of an environment or building up too much heat, I guess. Uh, so our athletes and their parents will also be, uh, asked to become educated about EHI and to sign an informed consent form before the student is able to participate in any sports. Policy four, one, two, zero, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children or reports of sexual assault of students by school employees. Um, it's been revised to make some copy editing changes, um, but it also requires employees starting next year, next school year, so July first of twenty twenty-three, to complete, um, DCF training on child abuse and neglect uh, and that the district annually share information about sexual abuse and assault awareness and prevention. Oh, and so to share the DCF's, any, any program that the DCF comes up with, um, on sexual abuse and assault awareness with families, staff, uh, students. Moving on to policy five, one, one, three, student attendance truancy and chronic absenteeism. Again, revised to reflect recent changes in the law, including a requirement that goes into effect, uh, July one of next year, that a school mental health specialist evaluate truant students and that the district provide families of truant students with info about the two, one, one infoline and other mental and behavioral health resources as needed. Uh, the policy also clarifies that mental health wellness days, uh, of which students are allowed two per year, uh, are excused absences when certain conditions are met and they cannot be used in, uh, determining truancy. Policy five, one, one, three, meal charging. Uh, this is a, a new policy, although I think we had something similar in place before. Um, but it's to address statutory requirements for how the district handles charges for school lunches, um, particularly how it handles delinquent debt for meals. It makes clear that food cannot be withheld from any student based on unpaid, unpaid meal charges and it prohibits shaming or disciplining of, uh, any student for having unpaid meal charges. Policy five, one, three, four, student use of the district's computer system. Uh, this is the student version of the, uh, computer system policies that are updated that I reviewed earlier. Policy five, one, three, four, use of private technological devices by students, um, again, similar to the other updated computer use policies. Policy five, one, four, one, dot two, one, administration of medication. Uh, it includes a variety of minor copy editing changes and it was also updated to reflect changes in public law, allowing school nurses and other qualified staff to administer opioid antagonists, uh, like Narcan and also to allow students to use continuous blood glucose monitors. It also requires the board to review its medication administration policy every other year and to seek input from speci- uh, specified medical professionals such as the head nurse, uh, whenever we amend this particular policy. Policy five, one, four, one, two, five, management plan and guidelines for students with food allergies, glycogen stores disease and/or diabetes. Uh, it's updated to reflect the new legal requirement that students be allowed to use continuous glucose monitors in school if they have type one diabetes. Policy five, one, four, two, dot one, physical activity, undirected play and student discipline. It updates the policy, uh, to meet recent changes in state law concerning the restriction of recess time as a disciplinary measure. Um, doesn't really have any impact on how Bolton does things since we had already prohibited this form of discipline. But it does bring the policy into line with the, the state law. Policy five, one, four, five, uh, section five oh four, the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, entitled to the Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, it's updated to reflect new federal guidance. Title five, one, four, five, dot five, title nine, prohibition regarding sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. Similar to one of the policies mentioned earlier, it's just a very minor update to correct a misnumbered subsection. Policy six, one, four, four, dot one, curricular exemptions. This is an update to bring the policy into compliance with existing state law. Um, previously, the policy had excluded fire alarm safety programs from the list of curricula that parents can, that parents have a right to exempt their children from. Uh, Bolton doesn't currently offer, uh, any firearm safety programs that I'm aware of. So the change won't really have any effect on day-to-day operations, but it does bring the policy into alignment of the state law. Policy six, one, five, five, advanced course or program challenging, uh, advanced course or program slash challenging curriculum. Um, this is a policy that we, I don't know if we updated it or if it was a new policy earlier this year. Um, but the State Department of Education released its final guidance, uh, for the implementation of the policy. So this revision reflects that new guidance. Mostly minor changes. Policy six, two, one, two, uh, parent-teacher communication. Uh, this is a new policy. It doesn't, it won't really change anything that we do. It just codifies our commitment as the district to communication between teachers and parents or guardians and spells out some of the specific ways that communication, uh, can be improved, including parent-teacher conferences. And then the last group of policies, uh, are all board bylaw policies. So nine, three, two, five, meeting conduct, nine, three, two, one, time, place and notice of meetings, nine, three, two, three, construction and posting of agenda, nine, three, two, five, dot one, quorum and voting procedures, and nine, three, two, five, dot four, minutes. All of these policies have been updated to reflect a new state law that makes permanent the COVID-era emergency rule, allowing boards to hold online or hybrid in-person slash online meetings. It doesn't require boards to hold a remote or a hybrid meeting, but it spells out what we need to do if we hold, uh, such a meeting. For example, how, how, how they need to be noticed and conducted, um, including how to respond to any disruptions of the meeting. Uh, the new policy also note, or the policies also note that board members have the right to attend any board meeting electronically if they wish to do so. Um, that's regardless of whether, you know, we've, we're still having hybrid meetings or not. However, board members who do participate remotely are expected to make a good faith, a good faith effort to state their name each time they participate orally in the meeting. And I think that's mainly for record keeping and so that attendees can follow who is contributing. Uh, that rounds out all of the policy updates. Um, we'll submit them for a first read at this meeting and vote, uh, to approve, or if you have questions, we can discuss them at the next meeting.
Great job, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, really. Thanks, Kristen, Sue, and Chris for doing all the policies. I know come, come in bunches and can be a lot of work, but thank you very much. You were very well stated and we'll come next month ready to vote on all of these. Uh, the ever-popular future business. Do we have any future business? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Uh, now looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's mid-year review of goals and to invite the superintendent.
So moved. This is Chris. I'll start it.
Thank you, Kristen Scott. Any questions, comments? Also, favor the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Post. Or abstaining. Um, okay. Thank you, everyone.